I move to approve the minutes for the June 1st council meeting.
I'll move to approve the minutes from the June 1st meeting.
This is Mary, I'll second.
Rick?
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Judy?
Yes.
John?
John?
Yes.
The second item is the clerk treasurer's report which was attached and sent to all of us. Lori, if you'd like to...
The council has been presented with the clerk treasurer's report for the month ending May 31st, 2020.
I move to approve, this is Judy.
I'll second, this is Jim.
Judy?
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Rick?
Yes.
Mary? Mary?
Yes.
John?
John?
Yes.
Agenda, agenda item three is hearing of public concerns. Do we have any callers that you're aware of, Mayor?
Um, not at this time. I will say someone called that I believe had spoken to Mrs. Yarris. And maybe she was or was not Judy's board the other, uh, last week.
Um, indicated that she didn't get off work until five. She wasn't sure she could call into the number, but she was waiting to try to, and it was regarding Dora. But I did not get a name, so she did say she spoke to a councilwoman though.
Well, those calls in later, we'll respect that call. Um, agenda item four, resolution providing for the establishment of a new fund. Lori, please number one.
Resolution number 24, 2020. A resolution providing for the establishment of a new fund. This is a request to establish fund number 230 for the local coronavirus relief fund. This is a fund that we would like to establish in lieu of the CARES Act. As we believe federal funds will be rolling down through the state, from the state to the county, and from the county to the city. And we are required to have a special fund established to receive that.
I'll motion to suspend Jim.
This is Mary, I'll second.
Jim?
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Rick?
Yes.
John?
John?
Yes.
I'll move to approve, this is Judy.
I'll second, this is Rick.
Judy?
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Jim?
Yes.
John?
John?
Yes.
Agenda item number five, ordinance providing for annual appropriations to the city of Bryan. Fiscal year ending December 31st, 2020, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Best, can I get you to, John, can I get you to hold? We did have someone calling. It is Jane Tucker. Um, she does, Jane Tucker. But she does want to verify for all of you, um, before she speaks, that she has recently moved back into a home in Bryan and the city limits, um, near the Dora district. So I'm gonna let her speak. Can you guys raise your hands if you cannot hear her? All right, Mrs. Tucker?
Hi guys, Jane Tucker here.
I did it.
Um, I didn't mean to cause any problems with my last time of coming to the meeting. Because I never said I lived in Bryan. I spoke of having a home in Bryan. But since then, I have now lost my husband and haven't moved back into the home where, um, my home is involved in the Dora. Now, I understand, I'm not a troublemaker, but I do know that Mrs. Yarris is the mother of Dan. And I know Jim and Mary are on the, um, chamber board. So, in my opinion, I find the vote for this Dora to be a little shady. And that, my opinion is that it should go to an election and let the community decide whether or not Dora should be voted in or not. Do any of you have questions for me?
I have to say...
Not that I'm saying, not that I'm saying the people who are gonna vote aren't, aren't qualified to vote. But it should be all or none, and the city council has too many people involved in the center of this whole thing. So it should go to the, to the people of Bryan to make that decision. It's only fair.
I have a statement I would like to make to that, please. Um, yes, my son is the director of the chamber here in Bryan. But I swore an oath when I took this office, and I would never, ever do anything that would jeopardize that. That is not why I took this office, and I do take offense to that, I'm sorry.
Judy, don't take offense, but it is a conflict of interest.
I don't feel it is, Jane, because when I do this, I do what I feel is right for the whole city of Bryan, not my son.
I still feel that it's a conflict of interest.
Well, you have your opinion, I have mine.
Okay guys, that's all.
Later Jane, we certainly appreciate your, your input.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. No, I'm lost my way. I can't get to agenda item five, wasn't it?
Yes, sir.
Alright, thank you. Agenda item five, the ordinance providing for the transfer of funds for the city of Bryan for the month ending June 30th, 2020. Lori?
Ordinance number 23, 2020. An ordinance provided for the transfer of funds for the city of Bryan for the month ending June 30th, 2020. This is a transfer request from the 1% income tax fund to the 101 general fund of $350,000 for general spending purposes. A transfer of $50,000 from the 1% income tax fund to the 203 street department fund for general spending purposes. And a transfer request of $150,000 from the half percent income tax fund to the 401 capital improvement fund for ongoing projects. Total amount of transfer requested, $550,000.
I'll motion to suspend Jim.
I'll second, Rick.
Jim?
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Mary?
Yes.
John?
John?
Yes.
I'll motion to approve, this is Mary.
I'll second, this is Judy.
Mary?
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Rick?
Yes.
John?
John?
Yes.
Agenda item number six, an ordinance providing for annual appropriations for the city of Bryan for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2020, and declaring an emergency.
Ordinance number 24, 2020. An ordinance providing for annual appropriations for the city of Bryan for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2020, and declaring an emergency. This is an appropriation request for $20,000 to the 208 revolving loan fund for ongoing loans. This is potentially for the loans that were, um, that we've looked at passing out locally. So I'm requesting $20,000 additional be appropriated.
This is Judy, I move to suspend.
This is Mary, I second.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I'll motion to approve, Jim.
I'll second, Rick.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes. Agenda item number seven is a resolution authorizing the clerk treasurer to advertise for bids for the project known as 2020 Don North Municipal Building Entrance Improvements. Can I ask a question, Mayor? I am sorry if this puts you on the spot, just put me off, that's okay. Because I was gonna ask you the other day, and I forgot. Um, someone, so, someone asked me, um, are there any improvements going on? They were concerned about, I don't even know this. But they were concerned about the roof of the Don North building? Does that even make sense, Brian, or what?
So Wednesday, we had hail damage, um, in this parking lot. Um, a lot of our employees had cars that have $700 worth of damage that insurance adjusters have been dealing with. But also, we lost quite a few shingles on the roof, and so we are waiting for contractors to come out. There was an estimate. Bryan has made contact with them. Yes, Bryan?
Yes, correct.
Shingles on the east side of the roof. Um, and yeah, we, we know it was from Wednesday's storm, so we're just waiting for someone to get out there and go get it.
Thank, thank you. And thank you to the community member who made me aware, uh, because I was not. I don't, I should probably look up more, um, when I come in.
Well, you get hail at your house. It was, it was like the line was Portland Street East, and it was pretty bad over here.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Sure. So, um, Lori can number and read this resolution?
Yes.
Resolution number 25, 2020. A resolution authorizing the clerk treasurer to advertise for bids for the project known as 2020 Don North Municipal Building Entrance Improvement.
Okay, um, yeah, I asked the mayor to send a sketch with all the council members there in your package that had a rough drawing of a floor plan and what the building elevation would look like. Um, we've been talking for a while about getting more room down there for the bailiff. Um, it's really tight for him. He doesn't have a whole lot of room to be able to, uh, you know, properly screen the people and whatnot. So, uh, what we're doing is expanding that area out a little bit and giving more room for social distancing. The judge does have funds available for this, but we're also entertaining some other possible funding sources, grants possibly if we can make it happen. But what we're trying to do is fast track this project and try and get it done yet this year. So, uh, the architect's working on it, and with that, I would just ask your permission to go ahead and advertise for bids for this.
What's the architect's estimate on this one?
Uh, he's around $125,000. And that includes the mechanical, electrical. We have to do some improvements on the sidewalk approach up to the building. Um, because the slope is changing a little bit there as well for handicap accessibility. And obviously, you gotta move the, the power doors and whatnot out there, get some heating, some lighting and so forth. And then, uh, they're actually gonna move the, uh, monitors also out of the bailiff's office and out there into the hall for the, uh, for the security, for the bailiff out there, for him to be able to monitor the rest of the building as well. So, it seems like a simple project, but anything simple turns into something complex.
I know the security system is in that area. Is that gonna need to be moved as well, or?
Uh, I would, I think the, I believe the metal detector is gonna stay in the same place. The bailiff is gonna flip over to the right side instead of the left. And that'll allow people to funnel in and have more spacing for social distancing for the six feet, and then allow them a direct access out. So they don't need to walk by Danny every time there, uh, as he's working out there. So, it's a really good plan, I think. It's just a matter of trying to make it look pretty and, uh, uh, make it all work and function.
Males? I move to, uh, suspend.
Jim, second.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I'll move to approve, this is Judy.
This is Mary, I'll, oh, a second.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Alright, thank you very much. I'll keep you guys on the loop when things change.
Thanks, Brian. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Agenda item number eight, a resolution passed by the city of Bryan affirming that funds from the county coronavirus relief distribution fund will be expended only to cover the cost of the city of Bryan. Ohio, consistent with the requirements of section five, D rule zero one of the CARES Act, as described in 42 USC 601D. And any applicable regulations as is necessary pursuant to House Bill 481 before receiving said funds and declaring an emergency. Lori, if you would read the number, please. Number one.
Resolution number 26, 2020. A resolution passed by the city of Bryan, Ohio, affirming the funds from the county coronavirus relief distribution fund. Will be expended only to cover costs of the city of Bryan, Ohio, consistent with the requirements of section 5001 of the CARES Act, as described in 42 USD 801. Formerly 42 USD 601D, and any applicable regulations as is necessary pursuant to the House Bill 481. Before receiving said funds and declaring an emergency.
Council, we had to tweak this, um, and I did send it to the newspapers right before the meeting. Uh, there has been a change in the state legislature and the US Treasury. The US Treasury is referring to this fund as 601. The state is referring to it as 801. So we've been advised, um, to put both in, and the hope for that is that once the county gets the money, um, we can get our distribution for our part in the CARES Act. Um, so I apologize that this has changed. You guys originally had passed a resolution. Um, the state killed, the legislature killed that bill in the last minute. Uh, I think there was a lot of pork in it, and they didn't feel that it was reasonable to accept it. A lot of things got shoved in at the end, so they started over last week. So I appreciate your patience in this one as we tried to navigate the waters, and I'm very hopeful that we do not have to have another resolution in a few weeks. So, thank you.
And once again, we, we have been, this is maybe for Lori as well. We, we have been, I, I know we just got the definition, so maybe it's a premature question. But we have been documenting what we believe to be reimbursable expenses, or at least we can do that in retrospect. Once we see what our amount that comes to the city of Bryan is.
Yes, we have been documenting, um, Chief Siders is doing a great job because he heads up our safety coordination. But, uh, we've been documenting, documenting what we are spending for anything related to COVID, um, since about the middle of March. So we can track anything from masks to, um, any kind of safety gear, extraneutbiotic, extra precautionary equipment that we're putting up or installing or purchasing. And this fund can be used for that, as well as other items related to COVID. We're estimating to receive from the county, I believe, around $240,000.
Yeah, that's, that, I, that's about the estimate that I thought was gonna get. Um, do, um, is I, and I cannot remember, I'm not playing coy, I just can't remember. Was there areas in there that dealt with, um, additional labor as well that was reimbursable?
The labor, applicable if it was unbudgeted. If it were budgeted, it would be applicable.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I understand you.
Thank you. Others? Questions? Uh, we can, go ahead.
I'll motion to suspend, Jim.
I'll second, Judy.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Move to approve, Rick.
This is Mary, I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes. Agenda item number nine is employment status change, Mayor.
Yes, I am respectfully asking council to remove Chief Chris Chappa from probation on June 17th. Chief Chappa has successfully completed his probationary period of six months and has implemented several MOUs between OPPA and outside entities. Promoted two sergeants, and has been a countywide leader in implementations of policies for all departments during the COVID-19 pandemic. Again, I'm respectfully asking the council to remove Chief Chappa from his probationary period.
I'll motion to approve. Jim?
I'll second, Rick.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 11 is permission to post.
Um, no, actually, we're on number 10, Mr. Best.
Thank you very much. Once again, I cannot get through a meeting without spitting an item. My, uh, my apologies. Uh, yes, resignation, number 10 resignation from the mayor's office.
Yes, council, you've presented with a letter, and I'm requesting your approval of a voluntary separation for Natasha Baldwin, effective June 2nd at 11:30 AM, please.
I'll move to approve, Rick.
I'll second, Judy.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes. Now, agenda item number 11, permission to post.
Yes, council, with the voluntary separation, I am asking to be able to post the position for executive secretary, um, in my office, but I would also ask for some flexibility. Um, I want to see if there's anyone internal that we can look at, so I will actually post internally first. Um, our, my biggest issue is I, I've managed my own letters and, and all of the duties myself fairly well. However, the city main phone line comes into my office, and, um, it can be somewhat time consuming, uh, for me to answer the main line and connect people where they need to go, whether it's the tax department or engineering or street or whatever. So, um, that is the major concern I have. Um, so I just, I'm gonna ask for some flexibility. I will do everything I can to be, um, really responsible with the finances at this point. Um, but I may have to hire someone full-time again. It, I, I'm hoping to get someone that can share a duty or, um, even look at part-time options. So I just would ask for some flexibility in posting that position as well. Any thoughts?
I just wanted to comment that, uh, you know, we, in a wage committee, had discussed, you know, the possibility of, uh, somebody internally that didn't work out. But, uh, uh, that has been discussed, that it'd be someone that may be able to share some duties as opposed to hiring somebody full-time. I guess I move to approve the, uh, posting, or, uh, the, the permission to post.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
We were doing so well, and then it's bladed, and I'm sorry.
Item number 12, appointment, Mayor.
Yes, I am respectfully asking the council reappoint Amy Welling to serve on behalf of the city for the Williams County Combined Board of Health. Um, her term actually ended in December. It was something that was missed. Um, and thankfully, the Williams County Health Board did vote to keep her. She's doing a great job for them. But to clean up our records here in the city, I would ask the council to approve her. Um, the term is a five-year term, which will end in January of 2024. Currently, the city of Bryan has two representatives on that health board. One is Jerry Stollings, who I believe is their president right now, and then, um, Mrs. Welling.
I'll motion to approve, Jim.
This is Mary, I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes. Agenda item number 13, status change, police department.
Hello, everybody, and thank you for the vote for me. I'm here to ask for permission to promote, uh, Patrolman Tony Potts to, uh, captain of the police department. Tony has worked with the police department since 12/16/2008, has 11.6 years of service, and has agreed to take the position, knowing that it's gonna be a lot of work.
I'll motion to approve, Jim.
I'll second, this is Judy.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Uh, thank you, and Tony wants to also say thank you. He told me that earlier, so he appreciates your confidence in him. So, thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you, and happy birthday to him.
Yeah, I did wish him a happy birthday earlier, so tomorrow, if you can see, it's a bladed birthday for Tony, so, thank you.
Agenda item number 14 is the discussion on Dora, and before we start that, Rhonda, I'd like to ask you a couple of questions if I could, just for clarification. Because, once again, as I reported last time, my interest is to make sure that there is no repercussions for anyone on council before we discuss this. Um, you're, and this is your understanding, that the ethical parameters as to who can discuss, deliberate, and vote on Dora. If it goes before the people or whatever, who can even, of the five of us, who can and cannot discuss or deliberate, deliberate without potential, they can, anybody can. But without potential ethical concerns being called into question.
Okay, well, let me clarify that I represent you as a board. I do not represent each of you individually, so you have to make your own decisions. As I said at the last meeting, the issue was posed to me, and I was asked to contact the Public Ethics Commission about this issue. As to Judy, I think you have summarized the issue for her, is if there were some type of financial gain for the chamber. That could pose an issue for her to vote. And I'm sure that you don't like that answer, Judy. Again, you have to make your own decision, and again, I don't know at this point what the plan is gonna be, if there is going to be any financial gain for the chamber. So she may be able to deliberate and vote on it. Uh, my understanding is that Jim and Mary, due to their positions on the chamber, may have been intimately involved with the discussions for Dora and the plan. Again, uh, there was a decision, I think, provided to you from the public. Again, there was a decision, I think, provided to you from the Public Ethics Commission that discussed the conflict that you may have from sitting on that board and then voting on something for which you were promoting. So you need to read that decision and decide for yourselves whether you should deliberate in this issue.
So it is, even if the with everyone on council should have got my draft proposal, which addresses the issue of the chamber specifically. I thought what I heard Dan say was, none of the money's going to them, they're going to put it back into the DORA participants, permit holders. So I made that very clear in that proposal, so I'm not, I believe, I think, under that pretense, I believe Judy's fine. But it's my understanding from what you're saying, that even discussion and deliberation of Mary and Jim could be problematic?
Potentially, yes, if they were, I don't know. I see that there are names on the document. They have to make the decision, because I was not there, but their names are on the document. So it could prevent, it presents a conflict potentially, that you are intimately involved in the construction of this program, and then using your position on it to promote it or to pass it. So it's a decision that I can't tell them how to vote.
No, no.
If I get advice, they have to read the ethics decision and make a decision for themselves whether to vote or abstain.
Right. I appreciate that, I think we all understand that, I just wanted that, I wanted that clarified for me, if nobody else. If on their, on Jim and Mary's behalf, if they did deliberate, discuss, and if someone did call them on it, what's the worst case scenario, because I know they're not going to be fined or put in jail or told they have to get off of council? But my understanding, and they correct me if I'm wrong, please, because I'm not a lawyer. My understanding of the ethics issue is, is if you violate the ethics and you, it passes, and the Ethics Commission find that there was one or two people that were in conflict, it is my understanding that that issue is negated and no longer available to be discussed. Is that true?
I think both things are possibly true.
All right.
They could negate the issue. There could also be potential personal consequences. It depends on the depth and what the fine could be of the Public Ethics Commission.
Okay, okay.
Go to how does the chamber benefit? How does it benefit them? What's the relationship to the other people who are benefiting from it? I mean, there's a lot of questions that come to play in that.
Well, and my concern publicly, I'll state it publicly. My concern is, with so many people passionately in favor and so many people passionately opposed, that either, either whatever happens could be challenged by the party that doesn't get what they want. That's my, that's quite frankly, my concern, counsel. It has nothing to do with anything else, that I just don't want us discussing, deliberating, and finding out we passed something, and then it's no longer viable. So I appreciate that. I do have another question. If it's just Mary, Rick, and I that discussed, deliberate, and vote, it's my understanding that we, all three need to agree. It's a simple majority, which is still, it'd be abstain, abstain, yes, 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 or no, 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 or yes, no, yes, or whatever. Is that, is that correct?
Well, I think you mean you, Judy, and Rick, right?
I'm sorry, yes.
Who do not take it as an emergency measure, then our ordinances pass as a majority vote. So of those of you who are left, it would have to be the three out of five to vote yes or passage.
All right. One final question, before we go ahead and discuss this proposal. If this was put on the ballot in Bryan to be voted on, who could vote on it? Would it be just the Bryan residents that have a Bryan street address? Or would it be Bryan residents, including those in country addresses?
No, it would be those that are within the jurisdictional or corporation limits of Bryan, Ohio.
All right, okay, that's helpful.
You can have a Bryan address and not be able to vote in Bryan.
I got you, I got you.
I have a question. So tonight, basically Judy and Jim and I can't really talk about it, because we could be facing ethnic violations.
I think if you haven't, if you haven't talked with the other person yourself, it may be wise not to do so. I would advise each of you to have a personal conversation with John Rowsky at the Public Ethics Commission, and make your own determination.
Okay.
I have written a letter to the Ethics Commission, and I'm waiting on the answer.
That's good.
So that's, I haven't heard anything back yet.
Mr. Bets?
I think to correct, or to make a statement about what Mary, as it relates to Judy, in this proposal tonight, this draft proposal, it was specifically stated that the chamber was not going to get anything. So therefore, Rhonda, it's my understanding that Judy is not in conflict of interest, because there is no money involved. Is that your understanding?
Personally, I would say that. I think if she has written to the Ethics Commission, it would, you know, they will give her that answer.
Okay, okay. What's up with you, Judy, what you want to do tonight? I purposely put that in there, so you could discuss and deliberate if the answer was just that Jim and Mary may not be able to. So other questions before we discuss DORA?
Actually, I would like to table it right now, and so we can find out whether Judy, myself, and Jim can talk about it. Because if we can't ask questions or talk about it, why go over it right now?
Well.
We're beating a dead horse right now.
We are, in that regard. I have no, I have no problem with that. The issue is one that others have wanted to expedite this for a variety of reasons. I have no hurry to it, but the proposal that I have presented to you in draft form is what would be acceptable to me, no matter when we vote on it. So.
But if I have questions on it, I really can't say anything, so. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, we should just table it, and so we can know for sure if the three of us can do anything about it or talk about it.
Yeah, or we could, or I could at least present the proposal, so people that are listening could at least know what's being made available. You've already heard one person, which I had no contact with, make a statement that is in the proposal. So to me, we don't need to discuss it perhaps, but at least let people know what we're, what I am presenting, that we're talking about.
Are you talking about putting it up to the people to vote? Is that basically what you're saying, John?
In a nutshell, in basically a 30-second elevator speech, the proposal that I submitted to council as a draft proposal was first, that because of the impact on the total community and the controversy on both sides, I believe it should be voted on by the people. Now, we know that it's the people in Bryan residents in the city of Bryan. The second thing was, temporarily, it changed. My parameters were Monday through Saturday, I believe, as I recall, it was noon to 10:00 PM as a last call, kind of an approach. Geographically, it was what the chamber had submitted prior to today, which was map three, which was basically the downtown area, including Myros, Father John's, Nacho Tacos, and Eternal of Eagles, and also from Butler to High Street on the east side of Main Street. So we, in essence, what that did was it cut out the courthouse, so we didn't have to wait on that scenario. It's my understanding, I talked with Dan, it's my understanding that he has the time to talk with them on the 25th, I thought he told me, to discuss with them what their thoughts are on allowing that. This proposal just went ahead and said, no matter what they discuss, and agree or don't agree to, we could, we could go ahead with that area, and then if they wanted to include the courthouse, of course, we could, we could do that. So it's basically, the time changed a little bit in the days, the issue of the geographic area, and that the people vote on it. Oh, one other thing, I also exempted the Jubilee. I think it's like three days, Wednesday, Thursday, whatever the Jubilee is, and I exempted from Black Thursday through December 25th, with the Santa Claus house being downtown, et cetera. That's what the proposal was, in essence, and we can certainly postpone that and discuss that, but if we want to put it on the ballot, we need to have it in by whatever I said that date was, I think it was August something 5th. Does anybody remember? I don't, I think it was like August something or other. So if we wanted to have a couple of readings, that's fine, but I certainly have no problem with waiting. It doesn't sound very promising for Jim and Mary, based on what I'm hearing. Judy, I think, as long as they're states very clearly, there is no problem, which I believe Dan said that he did not, and just did not want that to occur, his intent was not in that anyway. I got a feeling where this is going to go is probably the three of us, but we can certainly wait. I'm at your pleasure.
Rhonda, just to be clear, with the other three and their affiliation with the chamber and with the DORA itself, if we were to present something that, just to put it on the ballot, they could vote on that. They just can't vote directly on the DORA, is that correct?
I was just thinking, I would recommend to Jim and Mary to include that, and maybe Judy might even want to add that. I don't think that's going to change anything, at least for Jim and Mary, because they're still in their position as council members, promoting something that they had an interest in. So I think any deliberation for the two of them is going to be an issue. But I would encourage both of you to be very thorough with the commission about the involvement that you had, that you have signed on to the movement, and whether you can vote, whether just to put it before the people, because that could change the issue for the two of you.
Can I ask what interests we have? Because here's where I get confused. All we did was, it was presented at a chamber meeting, this is what we like to present for council, yes or no? All of us on the chamber board said yes. What's the interest that Jim and I have? Because we have no financial interest with the chamber. We have no financial interest with any business downtown or any business that's going to be included in the DORA. This is where I get confused on what's the ethic violation, because all we did was say yes, present it to council. That's all we did. So I'm lost on what we're, what the ethic violation is. And I've read what you gave us, I just don't understand, because there's no monetary, no monetary money coming through. It was just a yes, present it to council, that's it.
Well, again, I don't represent you personally.
Right, right.
If you read the opinion, it talks about your position and using the position as a number to promote something for which you are otherwise involved.
Yeah. I don't think it's a money issue as much as an influence issue, but I'm not a lawyer either. That's what it sounds like when I hear it. I don't know.
I guess for me, I see where you're coming from, John, to put it up to the voters, because we've heard so many pros and cons. My thing is, this is supposed to be done to help the businesses in Bryan, and to me, they need that help right now. I, I don't know. I'm really, I'm really confused. I'm not confused, I'm conflicted.
Yeah, I understand. I think what I put in there was some, I think there are going to be, that's going to be a statement of, hey, we need this now. My statement was, quite frankly, my understanding, and I certainly will stand corrected, my understanding is, when I looked into this, is that six, there's nine permit holder, liquor permit holders that we're talking about. One has already said, no matter what you do or say, we're out, I have no interest. That leaves eight. Of those eight, six of them already have outdoor patio and permits to be able to do things outside. So the issue, the issue becomes one, and the third thing is, House bill, they just changed the number 669, which just passed the House and now is going to the Senate, which allows liquor establishments to have people in their outside parking lots and outside areas with open containers. So I think, I'm not sure, I think the more the issue is how comfortable and confident people are to come back. And that's why there was another proposal, as you saw, that I did not realize the mayor and a county commissioner had already talked to about the, all of the restaurant liquor permit holders, and they did not have a major interest in. And that's what they were doing in Toledo, which is expanding their space outside. And there wasn't a lot of support for that, apparently. So if that's not the case, then my response is, you do have outdoor patio, at least six of the eight, two do not. And you might want to utilize that between now and then. But I just, I really believe, as you all know, because that was the issue a few months ago, that I believe, and I think Judy, you said it, that, you know, we were elected to vote and represent these issues. I'm not in agreement with that. I feel as though I was elected to represent the people. And that means, there's a difference between representing people and voting for the people. And in this particular case, when you've got such a large impact on so many folks in the community, and it has such a diverse approach, of which we all got the petition today, had a very similar kind of issue with it. Many of them were outside the community, and some of them were just flat-out ineligible. But the point is, they made the point, which is, there's a lot of people for it, and there's a lot of people against it. So I think what we need to do is have those people that are for it, restaurant, et cetera, holders, permit holders, and other people, and those people that are against it, bring it to the people and say, this is why I'm for it, this is what's going to be helpful, this is why I'm against it, let the people decide.
John, I have another question for you. In your little thing that you sent out to us, you said in there that the chamber should have to pay for this if it's put on the ballot. Why would they have to pay for it if we're the ones that are going to put it on the ballot?
Paid for what?
Paid for to have it put all expenses would be at the, all signage is at the expense of the chamber.
Yes, signage. When you put the DORA sign up.
Well, you also, I thought, or you had down that Well, you also, I thought, or you had down that, that, maybe I read it wrong.
Judy, it doesn't, you don't have to pay, when you go on a general election ballot, you don't have to pay, it's not like a special election. So there, there's no. Put it on the ballot.
Okay.
I was just talking about the sign itself, the DORA sign. And they were gonna get the money from the cops, they might as well pay for the signage instead of coming out of the city, that was my thought. That's a good question, I appreciate that.
There's, you know, there's a lot of things that we can talk about as far as the DORA, but right now, where I'm sitting, you know, I, first of all, you know, I, I feel that that is part of council's job, is to make some of those decisions. I've, I've given that a lot of thought, but quite frankly, if the only way it's gonna end up even having an opportunity is to put it on the ballot, I'm fine with that, too. Uh, but as far as we even discussing it, until we know more about what we are capable of doing, I don't think that we need to even discuss it. We need to know, can we vote on it as a council to approve or not approve? And if not, can we vote on it as a council to put it on a ballot? If we can't do that either, there's no point in discussing any of it.
Yeah. I think there's two things there, just so we're aware, there's two things there. One is what is the it? What I submitted to you as a draft proposal is not what the Chamber and the DORA committee submitted as a proposal. So the it is, first, there needs to be a proposal put before us that we vote on. The second thing also is, um, who can, who can vote on it? And I am fine with that, I'm fine with, just understand the timing is gonna get worse if it gets into July. I don't know when Jim and Mary can find out, or Judy, but maybe the quicker, obviously I know they're gonna try and expedite it, the sooner the better, because we're gonna run out of time for readings, and it's probably gonna need to be, we need to vote on this if we're gonna put it on the ballot. If we're not gonna put it on the ballot, it's still gonna be something that we're, when we institute it, it's gonna be in October, November, you know what I'm saying? So you've got a lot of time that's gonna be passing here, unless the answers come back relatively soon to, to Jim and Mary and Judy. But no, I'm fine with that, guys, I'm fine, we can wait.
John, you said a proposal, you, are you talking about the hours and the, and the area and all of that?
Yes.
We're supposed to decide that.
It's.
That's not up to the Chamber, that's up to us to make that decision.
Judy, it's in there, I have it in there.
I know, I know, but, but they presented us with maps, we're supposed to decide on which one we want. It, they're just, they're presenting us the different maps, am I right, Jim and Mary?
Yes.
I did that.
Maps, we decide which one we want. Then, they presented us with ours, we decide the hours, we can change it to our discretion.
I understand.
Up to the Chamber.
I never said.
That's the way I understand it.
I know, you're, I don't know how many times I can say you are correct. You're arguing the same thing that I am presenting. What I presented was map three, so that we could look at it, map three and those hours. In other words, this is what council, I has presented to get this off of square one. That doesn't mean we needed to do that, but that's what I presented was those hours, those times, that geographic area. So, no, I agree. It is, it is.
I thought you were waiting on Chamber to present that to us.
No, quite frankly, let me be real, if, if we would have went ahead tonight, which I, I, no problem doing, but if we had went ahead tonight and decided Jim, or excuse me, yeah, Jim and Mary would have said, no, I, I've looked into it, I don't, I can't deliberate, I can't discuss, I can't vote, I would have asked the two of you, do you want to vote on this going forward? So we can have two more readings on this over the next six weeks? And get it before the voters to let them know? So it, no, I'm, I'm, I can wait, it's just, it's going to be, if it gets down to the three of us, um, I think Rick has that understanding of me, I am not going to be in favor of not taking it to the people. I believe that's consistent with what I've done in the past, and it will be consistent in the future. I believe I represent the people, I believe that we should vote on like the first, I'd say 11, 12, 13 things on the agenda. We should vote on those, because we represent, that's, that's a representation of people that they expect us to vote on. I don't think they want us voting for them on issues that, how they want to be governed, or how they want certain things to change in their community. I do not believe that. I strongly.
We, we just have a fundamental uh difference of opinion on that, and that's, I, I do want to tell you, um, you know, feedback on what you presented, I like what I see, I, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. Um, I, you know, the one thing that I would prefer would be that we would be able to vote on it, if that can't happen and goes to the ballot, uh, that's, I, I'm fine either way.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your input, and I think it shows the people that we are looking into this, that there are stumbling blocks. And that's one of the people that contacted me in my ward, that you all got a copy of two weeks ago, when her statement was, what's the hold of, what's the problem? Let's go. Well, the problem is, I don't know, I don't know who can vote on it, that's the first problem. The second one is, I don't even know what we're voting on, because I've seen the Chamber's piece, but we haven't talked about it at council to see how we would want to amend that possibly. So I thought, well, here's something that we can kind of chew on. By the way, that, that proposal didn't take 15 minutes. It took three to five hours for me to work over for about a three, four day period to try and get things together that I didn't mess up on. So uh we can, anybody can write that proposal up. I'm, it doesn't have to be me. Oh, it sounds like the consensus is, we want to wait until Mary and Jim and Judy, I heard too, find out from the Ethics Commission?
Hopefully, I heard by the next council meeting.
Okay, I'm good with that. Uh, is that okay with everybody?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Sounds good. Um, I don't, can we, uh, I'm not sure if there's anything else, um, like to go around, uh, are there any city employees or BPA members that have anything they'd like to present? Hearing none, we'll proceed with um Ms. Judy.
Uh, yes, I'd just like to say congratulations to Chief Chappa and Tony Plots on their um new positions. Uh, thanks to Amy Welling for serving another term, and sorry that we lost Natasha. Um, and I wish everybody uh happy time. Is the next meeting after the fourth, or is it before the fourth?
After the fourth.
Before?
After.
After.
Let me have a safe Fourth of July.
Rick? Um, just want to echo those sentiments, congratulations to Chief Chappa and uh congratulations on, not only on uh your ship, I guess, but also I know it's been weighing heavy on you to, to uh pick a captain and, and get somebody in place, and I, you know, congratulations on getting that accomplished, and congratulations to now Captain Plots. And uh, uh, I just wanted to say one other thing, Paul Zwodny went to his uh farewell party the other day, and that was, uh, that was rough. Somebody that's been there for 41 years, um, and just can't express enough our appreciation for his service, and uh he's certainly a quality officer for, for the city of Bryan, and thank you for that. That's all I have.
Jim?
Sure, I'd like to echo the congratulations to Chief Chappa, uh, and uh Captain uh Tony Plots, uh, you guys are doing a great job. Uh, you know, especially in this day and age of uh what's going on in the world, um, I just want to say, say thank you to all of the uh police officers. For, um, and uh you guys are doing just a great job. I want to thank the uh city departments and uh the Williams County Commissioners for allowing us to do the uh drive-in movie theater on Friday and Saturday night. Uh, that was a great time, and uh congratulate Paul Zwodny, thank you.
Uh, Mary?
Um, I would like to echo Jim, Rick and Judy on congratulations to Chief Chappa and Captain Plots, and I also would like to thank everyone who came out Friday and Saturday to the drive-in, um, it was a great event done by the Chamber. Um, also the volunteers that all came out to help us, because we can't do it alone. Uh, and that's one thing I want to stress, one thing about being on the Chamber Board, we put a lot of work into it. Um, and that's something that people just don't understand, you just, if you're on the board, you work it. And I would just like to thank everyone that came out and helped us and enjoyed the movies, and I hope we are able to do it again. And have a good Fourth of July.
Lori?
I'd just like to share my congratulations with Chris and Tony, they're both very deserving of their promotions. Congratulations.
Rhonda?
Uh, the same, uh, working closely with the police department, I want to congratulate the chief and, and look forward to working with the two of you.
Mayor?
Yes, a couple of things. Um, first, Mr. Kozemplek, thank you for what you said about the police department. Um, I can tell you that it's, it's very difficult um for us here, for the police officers. Um, they truly do serve and protect, and some of the conversations on social media and within our community are hard for them, so I appreciate you supporting them. Um, Chris, congratulations um on your probationary period being done, and also for hiring Tony. Um, I would like to share with council, um, we did one day have about 25 to 30 protesters. Um, and Chris and I, and at the time Sheriff Moore went and we talked to them. And um they actually admitted that they didn't have any issues with our officers, and it was just a, you know, national issue. Um, but we opened the door in line of communication that if they had any policies they felt the city had in place, even outside of the police department, that kept them from reaching their God-given potential, that we were here to talk about that. So um I think that the approach that, that we took with them was welcome, and there was also a very nice last Sunday ceremony um on the courthouse square, and it was a prayer and peace rally. Um, and if you haven't seen that, it, it was, is on Facebook, and it was just a really nice day for people to come together, there were over 100 people there. Um, and.
I mean, they prayed for our police officers, it was just a very well-rounded event. Um, so I appreciate Nate Krasny for Grace Community Church and the other pastors in the area for putting that on. Um, the other thing I wanted to update council on, we, the revolving loan fund had met and um set aside $50,000 of revolving loan fund dollars for businesses, and it was a 0% interest loan, but it had to be COVID-related for the expenses. Long Beach Valley Planning has done a lot of work, they have carried the water in that, um, and then also Megan from WECO has helped with that. Um, but the application was available on numerous places online, and I think you could pick it up at the Chamber. With that being said, um, there were two applicants that applied, and um Long Beach Valley Planning is checking to see if they qualify. Um, so we will have a meeting very late this week to kind of regroup with the revolving loan fund. Uh, Mary should have gotten an email from Megan on that late this afternoon for some times. Um, so I do want to say, uh, the attempt was made for loans, that whereas, again, 0% interest rate up to $10,000, accounting to the similar program, and.
In which we can progress on the business side while having community acceptance, okay? It's not a real easy balance. Um, but I think things like the revolving fund, uh, which the Chamber got involved with, and WECO got involved with, and Ameri got involved with, and Rhonda got involved with, shows that we're out there trying to find ways in which we can assist businesses any way that we can, that is, seems to be. People, uh, the mayor and Bryan actually um looked into uh the concept and the idea, and I want to say thank you for both of you for doing that. Uh, is there some way that we could expand uh social distancing constraints with our current downtown um restaurants? Because I think people feel a little more, maybe, I don't know that, people maybe feel a little more comfortable, they could eat uh outside, they did look into that, and with um discussions with the, with those individuals, and uh I appreciate their efforts um at doing that. So that being said, I just want uh the Bryan community to know that, that uh city council uh is looking, and I mean all, uh, city council is looking at um ways in which we can help Bryan to progress. Uh, that being said, I'll move for a motion to adjourn.
I'll motion to adjourn, Jim. Second, Rick.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.